Hey. Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out. This is a fantastic turnout.
You can talk louder.
Oh, louder? Yeah. You can't hear me?
Everyone just needs to be quiet.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Just do this if I fade out. I will feel a little weird today, but hopefully it'll hold up. So, thank you for coming out for our community town hall. Sometimes when you organize things, you don't know if like five people are gonna come out or a few hundred. So, I think it's great when a lot of people come out, even when we have some disagreements. So, that's a good thing. It's democracy in action. So, I wanna say as I begin my second year in the senate, and I like to say this a lot because I really believe it, I wanted to say what a deep honor it is to represent our community in the senate, especially with everything going on right now in this country. And I know we have sometimes our California and San Francisco issues that we agree on or disagree on, but you know, the role that California is playing right now in terms of pushing back against some of the things happening out of Washington, whether it's around climate, or immigration, or the LGBT community, or the, you know, access to healthcare. California is playing a very unique role at the moment. And we always play a unique role, but it's especially unique now. And it is, I knew we were gonna have to work on a lot of part issues when I was running for the senate. I did not think that we were gonna also have to defend against like basic American values like the fact that there should be a free media. I thought that was settled in the past, but apparently we're gonna have to fight against things like that again. Last year was a very productive year in the legislature. Some things happened that the legislature and the governor had struggled to make happen for years, and finally the logjam broke. So, we passed SB 1, which is the largest transportation infrastructure funding measure in the history of California, $5.2 billion. We're gonna go to increasing everything from road resurfacing to starting to fix our sort of dilapidated state highway system, to investing in public transportation. Some of us fought really hard to make sure that public transportation was well represented. It is about 20% of the package goes directly into transit. So, it was a big step forward. There are some people trying to undo it at the ballot, and we'll have a debate as a state about do we wanna fix our infrastructure. But that was a, you know, that has struggled for years, and we finally got it done last year. I'm much proud of that. We renewed and extended cap and trade, which is California's innovative approach to reducing carbon emissions. Climate change is a model for the world. I was in City Mall right around the time that we renewed it, which had been a struggle for years. And the French Consul General came up to me and he said, "I wanna let you know how significant it is internationally that California did this to show that what our president thinks about climate, fossil fuels, does not reflect what everyone in this country thinks." And then we passed a major housing package, and I know we'll talk about housing today, but a package to streamline approvals for housing, to fund affordable housing, to make clear that cities have the power to require inclusionary affordable housing percentages for new development, which have been in doubt, and so forth. So, we got a big housing package on. Another area which doesn't get as much attention is that it was a big year for criminal justice reform last year, particularly reforming our approach to drug sentencing, getting rid of some drug sentencing enhancements, because drugs are an addiction, it's a health issue, it's not a criminal issue. And we also eliminated life without parole for juveniles. We are off to a great start this year. I wanna mention a few of the bills that I'm working on, most of which we've announced already. We have some additional bills that we're going to announce. I'll just sort of go through some of them with you. I'm gonna leave housing to the end of my remarks. I'll talk about what we're doing this year, why we're doing them, why I think you should support them, and we could have, you know, happy to take any feedback on that or anything else, because housing is really important, but there are other important issues as well. So, you may have seen that at the beginning of the month, I introduced a bill to adopt net neutrality in California. What we've seen is, you know, I am, I think I sit in the middle of some of the generations in this room right now. I'm pushing 50, and I remember when, you know, didn't have email, didn't have, you know, internet wasn't a thing. Well, the internet's a thing now. It's not just a thing. It's a part of our democracy, it's a part of our economy, and it's really just so tragic what the FCT did. So, we're gonna protect it here in California, and we are working that through the legislature. I think last week, or the week before, I introduced legislation to deal with auto-break-ins, which you know, both I do. There is a loophole in the auto-break-in penal code section that technically if you smash the window of a car and steal stuff out of it, that is not considered an auto-burglary, unless you also prove that the door was locked. And so, if you have, for example, a rental car, which there have been a lot of problems with rental cars being broken into, and tourists are now in Virginia, they've gone home to Virginia, or China, or, you know, Israel, or wherever else they came from, they're not gonna be able to testify that the door was locked, or burglar, all they have to do is unlock the door. Now, they smash the window, they know what's going on, and it makes it hard to prove. So, this has been a recurring issue that brought to our attention. So, we're gonna clarify, make really clear that, yeah, that if you smash a window to get into a car, you don't have to prove the door was locked, that is auto-burglary. Late last week, or late, a couple days ago, I announced an effort with a colleague of mine, Senator Henry Stern from Los Angeles, working with the city and also with Los Angeles County, around conservatorships, which is for chronically homeless people who are severely mentally ill, severely drug addicted, and completely unable to care for themselves, and who are dying on our streets. And I think it's something that, you know, and it's not just San Francisco. As much as we struggle with chronic homelessness in San Francisco, and again, we're talking about a very tiny subset of the homeless population, our homeless count is about 7500 or so people, we're talking about at the most a few hundred people who are just incapable of caring for themselves, and we see people dying on our streets. We all see it periodically and wonder why is this being allowed to happen? And in LA, it's even bigger than this here, it's a bigger city and a huge homeless population. And so, our Department of Public Health and our Homeless Services Agency, as well as the agencies in LA County, are saying that the current tools to conserve people who are incapable of caring for themselves, and who are deteriorating, dying on the streets, are inadequate, especially around drug addiction, because people are severely addicted, and then they can become sober temporarily, and so they're, and then they go back in. And so, we wanna make sure that our conservatorship law is ample enough to include this population. And in California, unlike some other states, we have some pretty stringent checks and balances of conservatorships. It is a significant step to conserve someone where the county basically, you know, makes decisions for them. You have to renew it every year, there's judicial involvement every step in the way, they get counsel. We take that seriously because you're dealing with people's civil liberties, but we wanna give our counties a better tool to try to help save people's lives. Also, we haven't announced this yet, but in very soon, we're gonna be announcing a bill to try to deal with recycling theft, not the individual people who are, you know, but we're talking about the organized crime rings that we see, where there are literally these are like criminal operations, where it's not just, you know, we're not talking about the, you know, the low-income senior who's picking some cans, or the homeless person picking some cans up. It's about these organized crime rings, we wanna try to break them up and have better tools to do that. A couple weeks ago, I announced a major effort to address youth homelessness in California. It is, when you see the numbers on youth homelessness in California nationally, it blows your mind if you haven't been involved in the issue before. One out of 10 CSU students in California is homeless. In LA County Community College, 20% of the students are homeless. We have the number of homeless people in, homeless young people, 24 and under, going 13 to 24 in California, unaccompanied, I'm not talking about kids who are homeless with their parents, which is a tragedy as well, but at least they're with their parents. We're talking about unaccompanied kids, 13 to 24, who are homeless. It's gone up by a third in the last two years, it's over 15,000 now, which is a conservative estimate, probably higher. And the state until about a year and a half ago, invested for youth-specific homeless services, for the entire state of California, whopping $1 million, for the entire state of California, which has since increased to 10 million, which is better, but not enough. And it's very decentralized. The bill will centralize homeless youth services into one office, the Office of Homeless Youth will be nested in an existing agency, and we're gonna increase the resources by an additional, if the bill passes, by $60 million. And so, we just wanna try to have a much more robust effort, because what ends up happening, you know, 2/3 of California counties do not have youth-specific homeless services. It's all the same. And to take a 16-year-old living on the streets and lump them in with a 45-year-old who's homeless for 20 years, those are very different populations. They both need help, but you can't just lump them together. Youth is a very, it's a very different situation. Final bills, I introduced last week, our, the great supervisor from this district, my friend Supervisor Katie Tang, was it, I guess, the year before, the last year, we passed really first-in-the-nation lactation legislation for the workplace to make sure that women who come back to work after giving birth are able to have private, you know, reasonable dignified space to lactate at work, so that a woman doesn't have to choose between, you know, a woman can make her own choice about when to come back to work. And if she wants to come back while she's still breastfeeding, then she can make that choice, and that choice isn't made for her. And we know that when women, and this has to do with pay, family leave as well, when women are delayed in coming back to work, whether it's because they don't have a pay per leave, or because they wanna lactate for their kid, and there's nowhere to do it, they have to sit on the toilet to do it at work, that exacerbates pay inequity, it just, it really is harmful. And so, we're gonna take that, announce legislation, take Supervisor Tang's legislation statewide, and she was with us at the press conference announcing it, and so excited about that. Finally, I wanna mention, we did, during legislation, I cried last year, and for reasons I don't know, the bill died. We're gonna try it again to expand onsite water recycling in California. Right now, you know, we are, looks like we might be tipping back into it, I think the majority of the state is now back in drought conditions. And we had this, you know, terrible drought a few years back, and, you know, the governor did some little things about we tried to require reduced water use and so forth, things with conservation. But unfortunately, we didn't use it as an opportunity to restructure water in California. We have a long-term structural water shortage in California, it's not just temporary drought, it's a long-term problem. And we have an ancient 18th, you know, 19th century system, and in particular, we do not recycle enough water, not nearly enough. And we want, we need sort of utility-scale water recycling, but also we need to make it easier for people to put water recycling, particularly the non-water use, in their homes, in their businesses. And the state has never set health and safety standards for onsite water use. So, for San Francisco, it's, we have a program, we have the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, it's a huge agency, they establish their own standards, and they're a program. For the vast majority of cities, they don't have those tools, and they are, a lot of cities want to establish an onsite water recycling program, but they don't feel comfortable doing it because the state has never set standards. We're gonna require the state to set those standards, so we can start seeing more of these permit programs around the state. So, those are, not all the bills we're doing, but a smattering of them. And so, you know, we have a good bill package this year. The other bills that, I authored three bills relating to housing. And, you know, I think for anyone who's watched my career in San Francisco, on the Board of Supervisors, will know that housing is, it's a big issue for me, it's a big issue for a lot of people, even though homelessness recently leapfrogged. Housing is the number-one issue in the city, when you told people housing is still a close second. And, you know, before I was in the Board of Supervisors, you know, I was the president of my neighborhood association, involved in a neighborhood, worked in the Castro for a lot of years. And so, I've seen a lot of different things about how the process works, how it doesn't work, how, what are some of the limits, when, you know, zoning makes you build a smaller building than people might otherwise wanna build. And I, you know, fundamentally, even though the architecture of buildings and the look and feel of a neighborhood are really important, I've lived in my neighborhood for 20 years, I care passionately about it, it's also about the people living in the neighborhood. And what we're seeing now, what we're seeing now is a lot of displacement happening, not just in San Francisco, this is not just like a San Francisco-Berkeley-San Monica issue, which I think some people have perceived it to be. There's all the little pockets of bad housing situations around the state. This is like almost everywhere in California. And when I talk to my colleagues, not just from West LA, but from the inland empire, from like Riverside, San Bernardino area, or from Fresno, or parts of the state that I think we historically viewed to be the affordable areas, those have gotten a lot more expensive. People are, you know, struggling there as well. The other thing that we have, and so, last year, as you know, and I'm sure there are some supporters and detractors in the room on the bill, I authored SB 35, which passed and is now in effect. And what SB 35 does is, we have something called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment RENA. Every eight years, every city in the state gets its number, market rate, moderate, low-income, very-low income, this is how much you're supposed to produce in that state here. And there's never been any keep then. And so, what the bill does is says, if you're meeting your RENA goals, Godspeed, if you're not meeting your RENA goals, we're gonna help you do it by streamlining housing approvals in your community. And streamlining mean, that means that someone proposes a project that's within zoning, it has to be approved, subject to design review. And if the bill, had a lot, there's a lot of debate about it in communities and the legislature, in the end, we got a broad coalition behind it of environmental organizations, affordable housing organizations, and labor. And we were able to pass it, and actually just on Thursday, the state issued its SB 35 Streamlining List, to say this is officially the communities that are streamlined at which income levels, because the bill does it by income level. So, if you're meeting your market rate RENA, but not your low-income, you're streamlined in low-income, but not market rate. And so, San Francisco, for example, has been meeting its market rate RENA, so San Francisco is not currently streamlined for market rate, it's only for below-market rate. But what that list showed, and it was not, I guess, a surprise, but it's still shocking, is that over 97% of jurisdictions, cities and counties in California, over 97% are falling short of their RENA goals. About 2/3 of the jurisdictions in California, it's about 550 jurisdictions, so about 2/3 are falling short of everything. The other 3rd is typically meeting its market rate, but not its below-market rate. There are 13 cities in the state that are meeting everything, and you might think those might be bigger cities that have more robust affordable housing, no. They are cities, including Beverly Hills and Puerto Madera, that manage, because the RENA process is broken, to get a microscopic RENA. So, Beverly Hills, I believe, had a RENA of over eight years of three units. So, one of my bills, which I'll get to, SB 828, gonna try to fix RENA to make it more data-driven based on actual road predictions. So, the bill is now in effect. And so, this year, I introduced three bills on housing. One of them, which I imagine probably will not be a big topic of discussion today, but is important, is SB 829, which is our farmworker housing bill. There is a dramatic shortage in farmworker housing in agriculture areas, and so this bill will make it easier for agriculture, for farmers, to build housing for their workers, and have a nonprofit affordable housing organization manage it, you know, like your boss and your landlord would be the same person, and try to have more, you know, so we don't have farmworkers living in their cars, living in a motel two hours from where they work. And then, but putting that aside, so SB 827, which I see designed, thank you for caring about the bill, you can agree with it. So, just big picture here. California has a housing deficit in the millions. It's, you know, millions are short. And, you know, in the Bay Area, in the last seven years, we have added, for every, for every eight jobs that we've added since 2010 in the Bay Area, we've added one unit of housing. Eight jobs, one unit of housing. This state in general has been growing for a long time. And in the 60s, and 70s, and 80s, a number of cities, including San Francisco, including Los Angeles, downzoned. Los Angeles in the 80s downzoned so aggressively that they chopped in half their zoned housing capacity. If you theoretically built everything to zoning, they chopped it in half. San Francisco downzoned in the 60s and 70s repeatedly, including even having like 40-foot height limits on van nests. And so, we have made it harder and harder to create housing in California for many years, and so now we have a deficit in the millions. And that deficit grows by 100,000 every year, because our legislative analyst tells us that California needs to add every year 180,000 units of housing statewide, just to keep up with growth. We're not even talking about making up for the past deficit, just to keep up with growth. In reality, we produce 80, so it goes by another 100,000 a year. And as we have this growing deficit, we all see the impacts. We see the impacts when displacement happens, when people are not able to afford to live here, if someone loses their rent, rental apartment, and they have no other options. We see it when families leave because they have that second kid, and they can no longer make a go of it in a one-bedroom apartment, and there is absolutely nowhere for them to go if they can afford. There's actually been some press in the last few days about some school districts, one in San Jose, well, a school district in San Jose, that they are seeing declining, significant year-after-year declining enrollment because of the cost of living, because families can't afford housing or leaving, and they're now closing some schools. Cupertino also is seeing declining enrollment because of lack of affordability. So, it has so many impacts on people, real people, it's doing damage to our community. And housing is a hard thing. We all love our neighborhoods, and we all, myself included, you fall in love with your neighborhood the day you move in. And change, like new development, is hard. But we are, as a state, strangling ourselves. We are undermining our own climate goals, because as we push people out of cities and urbanized areas, and create more and more sprawl, when we don't build in the Bay Area or in LA, it doesn't, those people still need somewhere to live, it means that we just push them out further and further, and they cover up open space and farmland, and build where there's no public transportation or very little, and they are now doing three-hour-a-day commutes, whether you're, or more than that, whether you're commuting from Stockton into San Francisco, or Modesto into San Jose, or Riverside into Los Angeles. And by doing that, you are increasing carbon emissions, and undermining our climate goals, 40% of our carbon emissions from the transportation. You are undermining people's health, because it is not healthy to be in a car that long in terms of back problems, diabetes. You are undermining families, because people are now spending less time at home, and they get home completely exhausted, and they don't have time to spend quality time with their kids. It has a lot of ramifications. So, this is not just a theoretical debate. And one of the very specific issues that we have in California is that we have a lot of significant public transportation infrastructure, whether it is a subway stop, or a fixed rail stop, or a high-frequency bus area, where we have zoned for intensely low density around there, including single-family homes. And what that does is it means fewer people are allowed to live near public transportation. And you basically are deciding that we're making all these really important and major investments in public transportation, but we are not gonna let very many people live around it. We're gonna push people out further, because we've zoned for such low density, and those people then are gonna not use public transit, they're going to have to drive, and you create this sort of vicious cycle. And so, SB 827, basically provides, pretty simple, that in areas around good public transportation, so within a half a mile of a major hub, whether that is a subway station, a, you know, port station, Caltrain, LA Metro, a major hub, or like a ferry, something that's a major kind of public transit node, or an area where you have multiple bus lines intersecting, and so it's sort of a major transit connection, within a half mile of that, or within a quarter mile of a high-frequency bus stop, you can no longer limit density, you can't say only single-family homes. People can build a single-family home if they want, I grew up in a single-family home, nothing against them, but you can't dictate to people, you shall only build a single-family home here. In addition, it would That's serious, the people here who oppose the bill, I completely respect where you're coming from, and I know this is about a time. In addition, it would set what we call some minimum maximums for height, whether it's depending on the size of the street, how close it is, either 45, 55, or 85 feet. And of course, in San Francisco, with the exception of a few neighborhoods, with the exception of just a handful of neighborhoods, the presumptive height limit in San Francisco is 40 feet. And so, 45, so for a number of areas, it's not even meaningfully changing the height limit. What the bill will do, right, we've created a situation in San Francisco in terms of our housing patterns over the last 50 years, where there's two kinds of housing that get built. In the downtown Soma area, we build high-rise steel construction. Steel construction is the most expensive kind of construction, so it's high-rise steel construction, which becomes luxury, luxury condos. Or, we build intensely low-density housing, single-family, maybe two or three, it's an RH2 or RH3 in the neighborhood. So, either intensely low density in neighborhoods, or high-rise steel, expensive construction downtown, so on. What we've gotten away from in San Francisco is what we used to do back in the 30s, and 40s, and 50s, and 60s, and build what's called the missing middle. Midsize, small to midsize apartment, we see them all over. I live in the Castro, the Castro, Noe Valley, you see them, these apartment buildings of, you know, eight, 10, 15, maybe 20 units, they might be three or four or five stories tall, they're, and they were built before the downzoning, the change into RH2 or RH3, and they're still there, because of course, they're ground-potted in. And they're part of the neighborhood. You see it in Russian Hill, you see these mid-sized, so they're not, they're not, you see it out here too, plenty of places in the sunset, in the Richmond, and these are not, you know, they're not steel construction, because I think, I believe it's over eight stories, and you basically trigger steel construction. But they have, you know, these are apartment buildings, and many people, sure a number of people in this room, live in those kinds of buildings that were built before the 60s and 70s, that would be illegal today. So, these are already types of buildings that we have in our neighborhoods right now. They exist right now, and many of our neighbors live in those buildings. And what we're trying to do is say that that is a good kind of construction, it creates more housing, it is more, it is lower cost to build, it's not steel construction. You know, we're never gonna meet our climate goals unless we have more people living near public transportation, and we undermine ourselves continually by forcing people not to live near transit. And there have been studies done showing what are some of the ways that California can produce the millions of homes that we need statewide, with, in a meaningful way. And the number-one strategy is increasing density around housing. And the number-one strategy is increase density around housing. Now, a few things I want to point out, there's been some very good paid opposition to the bill, which I expect you to know I disagree. There's also been some claims that I think are not, are misleading or inaccurate. One of them is, what happens when you do a bill like this, is you see people immediately do a map showing visualization, or even love visualization. And what, when you're looking at it, you immediately have the reaction, this is going to happen tomorrow. Tomorrow, everything's going to be different. And we know that with development, it happens over a long period of time. You have to have an available parking, you have to have a private, you have to, you know, and so this is not like, tomorrow, there's going to be, you know, all these new smaller mid-sized apartment, it's going to play out over years and years and decades and decades. The second thing is, there was a, there have been some people that have run around and said, this is going to cause mass demolitions. And that is absolutely false. As an initial matter, the bill does not touch local demolition controls, local rent control, local displacement controls, it does not touch them. And in San Francisco, it is almost impossible to get a demolition permit for sound housing. This is, though, is not about replacing Local communities will be able to make their own decisions, whether it's their existing demolition controls, or additional new demolition controls, they'll make those decisions. However, we are going to, the bill's going to be amended sometime this month with some, I mean, some cleanup, but we're going to be putting some explicit demolition controls in the bill, because it is not my desire for there to be demolition, you know, we don't, it's not about tearing down, demolishing apartment buildings to build bigger ones, and particularly rent-controlled apartment buildings. We don't want them to be torn down. So we will be putting that language in, so be on the lookout when it comes out, and you will see. The bill also respects local inclusionary. So whatever the local inclusionary is, whether it's, you know, what, eighteen percent now in San Francisco, other places, it might be ten or fifteen, different places do it differently, that will apply to these new buildings. And so what that means is that we will see more affordable housing produced under this bill, because right now, if you're building a single-family home with two or three in a building, that's not even subject to inclusionary. San Francisco, it kicks in, I think it's ten, other communities, I think it might be ten, fifteen, even twenty. But if you're now, instead of building a two-unit building, building a fifteen-unit building, you're now part of inclusionary. Or if you were going to build twelve units and it's now eighteen units, you are now at a higher, higher number of units, because it's the same percentage applied to all of them. So that, that's the bill in a nutshell. The other bill, SB eighty-eight twenty-eight, which is arena reform, is really designed, right now, arena is an intensely political process. You've heard what I said about Beverly Hills getting three units over a year period, which is outrageous. There's, sometimes you have communities that are right similar next to each other, but dramatically different. I don't, I meant to break some numbers about the peninsula where we see this, but one of the most extreme examples is in Southern California, Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, and Manhattan Beach, three communities, generally it's similar populations that are contiguous right near each other. Redondo Beach got arena allocation for years of about fourteen hundred units, and the other two, I can't remember which is which, one of them got two, and one of them got thirty-five or thirty-seven. So it's hyper-politicized, we want to make it more about, much more data-driven, about actual population and job growth projections, and, and stop some of the gaming of arena that we see. I don't think, San Francisco has not really done that, the cities tend to get large arena allocations, sometimes it's the smaller, wealthier cities that are able to effectively, effectively exempt themselves out by getting a microscopic, you know, allocation that does not pass straight-based tests. So those are the bills, what we're doing, and, you know, obviously, it's the beginning of the process, but these help for all the bills. What I learned in legislature is what you introduce at the beginning often looks quite different at the end, it's a long and complicated legislative process. SB eighty-seven, it's a, it's a hard bill, it's not an easy bill at all. The precedent for it, the state has the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, where the state comes in and says, the city, that if developer comes along and says, I'm going to do a higher level of affordability, you get to build taller, and that's, that exists and has for, I think, thirty years in California. So SB eighty-seven is not a brand-new model, it's a different iteration of some existing precedents that exist in California law. And so it'll be a process, there will be negotiation, et cetera. We do welcome feedback, in addition to anything you want to say today, feel free to submit a letter or emails to my office with feedback, and obviously, if people just want to oppose the bill, for those who oppose it, everyone has a right, but we also really welcome thoughtful feedback. People say, you know, this is part of it, where I think this should be different, you might consider this, we welcome that, and we read all of that, and some of the people come forward with amazing ideas that we kind of thought of, so we want that feedback. So I'm going to stop there, happy to answer questions, and receive feedback, and thank you for listening, so.
I live in Noe Valley on Twenty-Fourth Street in a three-story building. So it's, you know, I'm sure that's a grand recorder. Supposing my landlord wants to build up, what's going to happen to me? You know, I mean, he's got to, he's got to knock walls down, this and that, where am I going to go when the wrecking ball comes?
Right, well, that's why we're going to be including
I'm going to be displaced.
No, that's why we're going to be including
What do you do for the people who have been displaced?
That's why we are, that's why we are including
And I would break control.
Yeah, crafting, anti-demolition, displacement measures in there, because we particularly don't want rent control houses to be torn down. And in my SB thirty-five last year, if you looked at the language, we had, that bill, SB thirty-five, has a categorical ban on using SB thirty-five to tear down, to demolish rent-controlled housing, period, because it's not applicable in that situation. And so it's something I'm sensitive to, and we are working on language that will come in sometime middle to late portion of this month relating to demolitions, so I urge you to, you know, you go look at that, and if you have feedback on it, to provide that.
Because in the meantime, it's going to take quite a while for him to build the next few stories, and where am I going to go? That's my issue.
And what about all the people living in single-family homes? We have tons of rentals in the Sunset that are single-family homes that are very reasonable cost. There's twenty homes on my side.
Shut up! Shut up and listen, okay? I have, on my side of the block, twenty homes. Five are rentals, and they're very reasonable cost, I know exactly what they're renting for, some people have been in these homes for years, and you're not talking about sparing the single-family home, we're talking five out of twenty on my block. So you're still not amending this bill to take into consideration that a lot of single-family homes are actual affordable housing. And you know, I've lived there, I know what the rentals are, so I, you know, I think there's a lot of potential for demolition here of single-family homes.
I'm looking at that, too. I'm looking at your rentals. Yeah.
I'm a, I've been a real estate agent here in San Francisco for forty-three years.
Can you guys hear me?
I've been a real estate agent for forty-three years here in San Francisco. I can tell you that this bill will bring about massive demolition. None of the houses in the Sunset are designed structurally to accommodate additional floors without ripping out the foundations, without tearing them down, if you're going to build upwards. It will bring massive chaos to our neighborhoods, the way this bill is written.
And that, and that's why, I will say again, first of all, the city should put whatever demolition controls it wants in under this bill, and we will be putting anti-demolition language into the bill, and so I would encourage you to give us feedback on that language later this month when it goes in. We welcome that feedback.
The other point I wanted to make, this is such a magnanimous bill that it shouldn't be legislated, it should be put on the ballot for the people to decide.
Thank you.
Two, two magnates.
Yes.
Just two quick questions. What is about, I, myself and a lot of people I know feel that San Francisco is getting noticeably less safe, not only for auto, but burglaries, home invasions. Two weeks ago, just from Caravelle, there was an armed carjacking with a gun of a minor, and it's, that's in here, so downtown is much worse. I'd love to understand what is being done about the more sort of violent crime, and then secondly, what is being done to ensure that California isn't penalized in the new tax, federal tax plan, basically?
So, yeah, so in terms of violent crime, and we've seen an explosion of property crimes in San Francisco. We have a debate about, you know, Prop forty-seven that was passed in twenty-fourteen, which I supported, and I think it passed overwhelmingly in San Francisco, and, but Prop forty-seven didn't implicate violent crimes. So a lot of, and we have seen an increase in property crimes, although in fairness, and my view has always been, before we judge Prop forty-seven, you got to give it time to play out. And the increase in property crimes began before Prop forty-seven was passed, I think it began like in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve. And recently, my understanding is that San Francisco's trends on property crimes are not consistent with the state's. The state should increase, if there was an increase, as much, much, so there's something happening here. In terms of violent crime, there, we've not seen a kind of explosion. So we, in, but in San Francisco, when I was in the board supervisors, I don't get a vote on this anymore, but I was in the board supervisors, I was a very strong advocate for having an adequate staffed police. We had allowed our police department, you know, we defined it as nineteen, in the charter, it says nineteen-hundred-seventy-one officers are full-staffing. That number was even before it went in the charter, it was formulated when Diane Feinstein was the mayor of San Francisco. We were a smaller city population-wise, there's so much more, you know, neighborhoods that didn't even exist then. And so I did a resolution of the board supervisors to say, to do the city's policy, that that number tracked population growth, which would mean that our minimum staffing should be more like twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred. We had actually allowed, and this happened largely before I took office, and part of it was a recession, I'm not criticizing anyone, they didn't fund police academy classes for a year. And you had a big wave of people who were hired in late seventy, who they didn't hire, we went down to under seventeen hundred officers in two thousand. And so we worked very hard during my sixth year, not just me, but Katie Tang, Department Two before her, and others, to fund three to four police academy classes a year, and I don't know what the exact number is now, but if it's not back up to that two thousand level, it's much closer, but we have more work to do. Because when you don't have enough police officers, it means what gets shorted are the B tops, the people who are just in the neighborhood all the time, and, you know, you have these staffing shortages where, you know, you've all seen this, in terms of the response time, in terms of all of that. So we, you know, the board did fund fewer police academy classes last year than we had before. I was, again, as, as someone who's no longer making those decisions, I was disappointed to see that, because I think we need more. And, you know, in terms of, potentially, some people say, don't hire more police officers because, you know, we've had some abuses by police, but, you know, the reality is that when you're, when you're having more police academy classes, what you're doing is you're bringing more young people into the department. I, when I was on the board, I would go to all the police academy graduates, it was, you know, we do all this work, we fund them, I wanted to see the results. And you have, you know, classes of, you know, much more women, much more diverse, just really a slice of our younger generation, and that really ends up changing police culture in addition to having more officers. So I think we need to stay in that direction, because it happens and really disturbing things happening.
We have to go taxes.
Yes, taxes. Tax bill was an abomination for many, many reasons, and, and it was a tackle in California and Jersey, New York, other blue states that also have income taxes, and a higher home values, so higher property taxes. And we need to, you know, once, you know, in the future, if we have a different government in Washington DC, we need to repeal that. We do have a bill working that just passed out of the Senate, authored by the Senate President, President Leon, to authorize creation of, basically allowing people to pay their taxes as a charitable contribution, to a fund that funds the charitable services. You know, there, there is some dispute about whether that is legal, taxpayers will of course have a choice whether to do it or not, a long ways to go in the process, and I have no idea if the governor will sign it, but we are looking at some different creative ways to try to address this attack on California. Yes, and then, go ahead.
Well, my concern, I guess, is more global, not global, but
You speak in here.
A legal or undocumented criminal, they can be prosecuted according to state attorney of the Cera. And I find, I mean, the police go out every day risking their lives, and yet, there, I worry, does the state legislature have the facts of the police? Two. Three, I'm very, you touched on this, and this is this bill that it's already passed the Senate, it's the workaround bill which deals with the tax reform bill that was passed, whereby people, rich people in California who have property taxes that are more than ten thousand, or state taxes that are more than ten thousand, that they can now be able to donate to this state-funded charity, which is yet to be created, because that is another bill that's going to be presented. Now, how in the world does that help the middle-class citizens of this state? Because most of them do not have taxes that are ten thousand or more, or have property taxes that are ten thousand or more. So it seems like a small minority is going to benefit, and yet, the rest of the middle class does not, and I find that very, very disturbing, and how, how can that be justified?
So did people generally hear the question?
Yes, yes.
So, one by one. The first is on taxes. California actually has a very dysfunctional and unstable taxes, and that's why we veered back and forth. You know, I remember when we had, like, you know, every year a twenty-five billion-dollar budget hole, and then all of a sudden we've sort of, it's really severely swung back and forth, and that is because we are overly reliant on income taxes, particularly on high earners in California, where a small number of very wealthy families, taxpayers, if they, for whatever reason, you know, die, leave the state, like, you can actually, it can have even one or two families, the significance, and there was, in New Jersey, I had this problem, where there was one family that moved, and then, like, blew a hole in their budget. And so we, and income taxes, particularly on high earners, is the most volatile form of taxation. I mean, you get either an enormous amount of money, or all of a sudden it just collapses. And the reason, we've done that, and these are really hard conversations, you know, we've moved away from relying on property taxes in Prop thirteen. And by the way, there is going to be a proposal this year to reform Prop thirteen to take commercial property out of public And also, because our sales taxes were created at a time when you, you were focused on goods, physical goods, not services, when our economy was a more goods-focused economy, where we only, where sales tax applies to goods, not services, so there are, you know, ideas to say, hey, let's expand the sales tax to services, and then reduce the sales tax, you can pay a lower sales tax on a broader variety of goods and services, so not that we're getting more money, but that it's more stable. And so there are a lot of ideas about how to stabilize covering this tax system, every single one of them is really, really, really hard, because there are winners and losers. And so there, we, it is a real challenge in our tax system. And in terms of the tax bill, you know, the way the tax bill was written, if you can deduct up to ten thousand in state and local taxes, it's not either ten thousand in property taxes, or ten thousand property taxes and ten thousand income, it's ten thousand combined. And there are a lot of middle-class people in the state who, between their property taxes and their income taxes, are paying over ten thousand dollars a year, and those people will be hurt. So there will be higher, and there are higher-income people who are paying the alternative minimum tax, and already have fewer or eliminated itemized deductions. So there are a lot of middle-class people in California who are going to be hurt by the tax bill, and that's why we're just looking at ways to try to help people. And finally, on sanctuary, you know, the sanctuary, you know, we passed a sanctuary bill, SB fifty-four, and bill, SB fifty-four, and...
It's letting talk.
But to be clear, both SB fifty-four and San Francisco Sanctuary ordinance are very clear that people are to comply with federal law. And what this SB fifty-four and San Francisco Sanctuary ordinance is about is not about violating federal law. It's about saying that, that federal government, if you're going to enforce your immigration law, that's your choice. But our law enforcement officers are not going to enforce federal immigration laws. And when, you know, when you start, when you start, when people, the minute immigrant communities view police officers as ICE agents, is the minute where people stop reporting crimes, stop wanting to go to court. We know in California, after last election, given the statements by our then candidate, now president, about what he wanted to do, we saw a decline in reports of domestic violence by Latinas in California. People are scared to go to the police because they think they're going to get deported. So all we're saying is, whatever you're going to do, you're going to do on immigration, federal government. But we are not going to enforce your law for you, and under the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution, we're not required, so we're not violating federal law. I am someone who's always taken public safety very seriously, and that's why I supported increasing police staffing, and often got beaten up for doing that. And I support our police. But we have to also make sure that immigrants feel comfortable. So, let's see, up, a minute.
I actually have a lot to say, and I've talked a lot in the past, and I've written you before, so I'm actually going to give, my friend Claire, who's my neighbor, who I know doesn't come out to the stuff that often, and I met her last year, and she's amazing, I'm going to give her an opportunity to spit some piece on housing stuff, whatever it is.
Okay. Thank you for everything that you are doing with respect to housing. Look, like, my husband and I make decent incomes, I consider us middle-class. We couldn't afford an affordable house in the sunset. So we are very interested in having more housing built. I support your bill wholeheartedly. And I just need to point out that a lot of this keep the neighborhood the same talk. These neighborhoods were zoned the way they were to exclude people of color. If you want to perpetuate that, because you're benefiting from it, do a deep soul search, okay? Like, you might look around, say, "But there's a lot of Asians here." Like, that's not good enough, okay? We have a lot of underrepresented groups that is for a reason. And if you do not, if you do not support more housing, it'll only continue. And you will only contribute to that, contribute to that, no matter whether you voted for Trump or not.
Can I piggyback on that?
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on that on a very, okay. I actually wanted to turn the floor over to someone else.
Well, thank you. I talked a fair amount to people, talking to very young people in the LGBT community, especially, oh, in the LGBT community, and especially trans people, who live all over the state and all over the country, thanks to this wonderful thing you talked about earlier called the internet. And who are worried about their future in the places where they live, and who want to come to a place like the Bay Area. And they ask, "What would it take for me to come and live in the Bay Area where I'll be accepted, where I can go around and assume that people will be at least moderately friendly to me?" And I have to tell you, people, well, if you share an apartment with your lucky, for like fifteen hundred, fifteen, for fifteen hundred thousand, and they go, "What?" And my question to you is, I think that there's a structural issue with the way that we're doing politics, where we have a bunch of people in a room here who have legitimate concerns, concerns of one segment of the population, and who are not touched by these kinds of issues. How do we make sure that we bring in a wider variety of voices? That's really my question. Like, I would love to have any ideas for these, like, well, how do we, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you breathing up? Okay, great, thank you for that. So, you know, one, around housing in particular, one thing, you know, I was sworn into the Board Supervisors in January twenty-eleven, and even since over the last, you know, whatever, seven, seven years, I've seen there's more diverse voices in terms of viewpoints around housing that are being represented. And I think actually today, you know, even though people are, you know, booing or applauding and all that, it's like, it's democracy, it's beautiful. The fact that we have a community town hall where housing is a really, you know, passion issue for, you know, probably almost everyone here, not everyone, and you have very divergent perspectives represented. So I, I feel like because of the depth of this housing crisis and how, and everyone, I think, probably agrees that we are in real crisis, and the perspectives on how to solve it. You know, we are, because of how serious it is and the damage it's doing, I think more voices are being brought out. And I think that's healthy, it's healthy. I'm glad that there are people here who oppose SB eight twenty-seven, you're my constituents, some people I've worked with in the past, telling me what they think, and I applaud that. And I'm glad that there are people here who support it. So I think we do have a healthier dialogue around housing, where people can sometimes have uncomfortable conversations, but informed conversations. Because the Bay Area has always, you know, I came here twenty years ago as a twenty-seven year old. There are a lot of, you know, I was lucky, I came here, had a job lined up, I was able to rent a place. I could not afford to move into my own neighborhood today, by the way, if I would have started that all over again. But there are a lot of, you know, this is a place where young people have always come, whether it's, you know, people immigrating from Mexico, whether it is the hippie New Yorkies came here in, you know, the sixties and beyond, whether it's LGBT people, whether it's just people who just decide, "I want to live in the Bay Area because it's the best place on the planet." And we, you know, one of the hallmarks of this region is that we really want to welcome people here, and it's hard to welcome people in housing. So, okay, yes, and then, and then, and then Pam in the back, in the grave? Yes, so after her, it'll be you.
Scott, thank you for taking my question. First of all, one quick statement I wanted to make about our housing crisis, because, you know, I'm, you know, here in New England, experiencing this almost on a weekly basis. Houses get bought by speculators. A house behind my, my street goes up, you know, totally, you know, a dump, for one-point five million, guess how much the speculation paid? Two-point-two. If we could actually stop speculation, because no mom and pop, no, you know, starter, you know, family, young family, you know, who scrape and they could pay one-point-five million could compete with that, it's impossible. So that's, you know, that's my statement to all the people here who are saying, "Well, we need more housing." Well, if you could cut off the speculation, that's a huge step in, you can laugh, but then you don't like, you don't think about it, think about it. So, so my next question to you is, a lot of my neighbors are asking about RH one, RH two distinction, and where in your bill is going to allow, you know, more units being allotted into an RH one home? I kind of thought the statement in your bill was exempting maximum density control. That has pretty much...
No, so it's, and I, I will say, this is one of the, this bill is not always the easiest one to describe, and the whole thing about maximum, minimum, pay, it's like, it's been really confusing. The actual, the original reporting on the bill, the LA Times, they got them, I think they got them to fix it, reported that the bill will require sort of a minimum height of forty-five, fifty-five, eighty-five. Well, it's this zoning typically, not always, there is such a thing as minimum zoning heights, but that's very, very rare, and we don't have that in San Francisco. Zoning is typically a maximum, your maximum is forty feet, or sixty-five, or, you know, three hundred feet, whatever it is, and then the building can be up to that height, but doesn't have to be that height. So what the bill provides is when it says forty-five, or fifty-five, or eighty-five feet, that that is what we call the minimum maximum. So it's still the maximum, but it's the minimum maximum you could have. People can still build under it, someone could come forward, and this happens sometimes. In terms of the project, what they want to do, what, someone could come forward and say, "I want to build a single-family home, that's what I want." Or, "I want to build a three-unit building, I don't want a bigger apartment." People may have many reasons for doing what they're going to do, or maybe the lot size, it does, that's what, you know, really makes sense. And so, but, but people will have that, that choice.
So can you make, like, six units in an RH one? That's a specific question.
Depending on the size of the lot, and, so, and for, if you think about it, forty-five feet, right? At forty-five feet, that can be, that can be a four-story building. Right now, it's typically zoned, I believe, Sunset, I think, zone at forty feet. So right now, in this, at forty-five, the reason you add five on, that's actually, more modern zoning always adds five feet on because for the ground floor, you might want it to be a little bit taller, chances better architecturally. So forty-five feet, the same as forty feet, it's four stories up to. And depending on the size of the lot, you know, I, my first seven years I lived here, I lived in Castro on Collingwood Street. It was a four-story building, so it's probably at forty feet, and it was sort of ground floor with nothing, and then three stories, and each had two units, so it was a six-unit building. So that's what we're talking about, those kind of six, maybe eight, and, you know, the smaller kinds of apartments.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you, it's in the back there.
So one of your fallbacks for this project is local regulation on demolition, and that depends on a functioning planning department. And as a local homeowner, it doesn't feel like the planning department really works for us. It feels like it can be paid off, like, you can get what you want in our planning department. And I find all this talk about housing really hard when we don't have a housing department that seems, I mean, a planning department that actually seems to function. I have a four-story building behind me that's for a single family, it's for a couple, and it could house, you know, three nice flats. And, you know, it, anyway, so I find that disjuncture. And the second question I have is, what's happening with Candlestick Point and that development? Because that's where density could be so effective.
So, so two things. And what I've learned, what I've learned in my now seven years as a list leader, is that my control over departments that I set rules for in the vision is exceptionally limited. And there are times, you know, the number of times the Board Superv, and, and someone, I think it might have been Mark Bleno told me this, right after I was elected to the Board, he said, "Remember, Scott, when you pass a law," sometimes it's tempting to just say, "Okay, I passed it, signed, yay, move on." No, your job just started because you have to mod, monitor, monitor the implementation. And a number of times, the Board Supervisors, I would pass something in the law, and then you find out a year or two later that whichever department it is was not, either hadn't implemented it at all, or was getting it wrong. At the state level, it is exponentially more challenging. We, I mean, we, there was a law passed that required training of long-term care facility workers around LGBT cultural competency. I think they were supposed to do it in a year or two, it took like, a long time. So it happens a lot. So with the, you know, one, we're going to put some controls into the bill itself, you know, because I know there have been some issues. But, you know, I, I believe, after all these years, I understand some of the challenges with the planning department, it can be frustrating when you don't feel like the laws are being enforced. But with Candlestick Point, that, that was approved, actually even before I was in the Board Supervisors, in twenty-ten, approved for, I believe, twelve thousand units of housing, a brand-new neighborhood, everything.
We recently upzoned it.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yes.
That was a ballot measure, though.
No.
No, you did wrong. Okay, I didn't even realize that, that's great. And so I know there's some issues with the contractor that's qualified, some of the toxic reports, I'm sure that will, you know, be worked through. And the, and the first, but that's going to take years, it's building a whole new neighborhood. Same with Treasure Island, it's just creating a new neighborhood entirely. So, Mary, and then?
Hi, Scott.
Hi.
I have kind of a larger context question. So I don't know how much you can do, or the California State Senate can do about this, but when you talk about housing and the environment and all these things, California's getting, San Francisco Bay Area's getting thirty thousand people a year moving here, and California's getting hundreds of thousands. There's just, it's not possible to build our way out of, because supply and demand doesn't wait, supply and demand, supply and demand.
Can I, can I ask everyone, I'm sorry, I should say at the beginning, if, if you like what someone says, just do like, josh them. If you don't like it, do a top tail. Just that we're not interrupting people, thank you, sorry.
Let me finish, because supply and demand doesn't really apply to housing, and it never has. And I've got studies from Sydney, from Vancouver, from a lot of places, because really it's driven by developers and for high income, even for affordable housing. But my question larger than that is, is that, like, instead of pulling more people to California, drought-stayed with environmental issues, how, is there any way that you can do things like encourage the major companies that are here, both in agribusiness and tech, to spread the wealth, to go to places that have housing, where we can set up hubs and spread, and spread the wealth, like, across the country? Like, there are places that could use growth, that could use that, the places near universities that have qualified people, that would love to reinvest in their areas. Now, I realize this is not just a local question, but my question is, is there something that California as a state, as you and Legislator can talk about? You know, we lead in discussions about things, can we start that?
First of all, like your first point, with supply and demand, I respect your position on I don't agree. And we've seen actually a concrete example, Seattle, happened in Washington DC, there are some cities that have significantly ramped up their housing production and have seen rents go down. And so, I, you know, we, well, we have a situation where, where, again, producing one housing unit for every day jobs we had, and then you see housing prices goes up, go up. I think that's sort of proof in the pudding that it is about, we don't have enough supply and demand, but in terms of the demand. So, you know, two things. There's the people part of it and the job, that's something. When I, we, the answer is no. We, we don't, government is not in the business of deciding where people go. People can move wherever they want to. And when I moved, when I moved to San Francisco twenty years ago, I would have been pretty pissed off if someone said, "You guys, you know, we get to decide if you move," or, "We all make our own choices." And when, you know, and the fact that people are continuing to come here, even though we have high housing costs, show that people really want to be here. And so, so I, you know, people are going to go where they're going to go, and, and we need to anticipate that, project for it and plan for it. In terms of the jobs, you see some of that naturally. Frankly, we see some companies that have decided not to expand here because the cost of housing is too high, their workers can't find a place to live, and so they're extending elsewhere. Part of that is natural, you know, there, you're going to have ups and downs, cycles. But if we get to the point where we are discouraging companies from coming here, expanding here, you know, even though you may think that that sounds good now, in the future, when you have an economy that sort of creates out, and it's not a job center anymore, when I, you know, back, and I'm, when I was deciding whether to move to San Francisco in the mid-nineties, I remember someone saying, "That's an amazing city, it is a tourist town that has no economy left." That's what someone said to me. Well, we now have, we're still a tourist city, and that's great, a lot of revenue, a lot of business, but we now have companies that are headquartered, companies that want to, that have come in here, or started here and stayed here. And that, it's put a lot of pressure on housing, and we haven't built enough housing, but it's created a lot of great things for the city too. And so I, I just personally don't think we should discourage jobs.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah.
Because I'm really concerned about things like the tax breaks we're giving to multi-billion-dollar companies that kind of undermine, it switches the whole economy.
It's expiring.
Pardon me?
They're expiring, I don't think they'll be...
Oh, good.
Yeah, so, yes.
I wanted to thank you for the work you're doing towards ensuring that those of us who are not fortunate enough to already have a house, to already be renting a place, can eventually maybe buy a place, or if they choose so, to continue renting here. I think an incumbency advantage is not fair. Just because you have a place doesn't mean you get to ignore everyone else and say, "Oh, why don't you live in Tracy? Why don't you live in the Sierra Nevada? We ain't got no room for you here." Well, we can't continue to have a vibrant economy if we don't have people here, say, taking care of the elderly, who seem to be opposed to this bill, or who clean up our streets, and pick up our kids, and build our buildings. And I think there's no future for the city if we don't increase density, if we don't increase jobs, new quality transit centers, if we don't do anything for the next few generations. So thank you for working hard for those of us who are actually going to be... So thank you for working hard for those of us who are actually going to be alive in a decade or two.
Where's the question?
My Senator.
I'm sorry to point, but.
Under your bill, you say that the local inclusionary rules are to serve, is that correct?
Yeah.
First of all, I don't think it's very clear, if you could do something about clarifying it, I heard you.
That, that is constructive feedback, and I appreciate it, but I think we will do that.
Let me continue. If you say that local inclusionary rules apply, San Francisco, as you know, permits feeing out. By that, I mean, I'm curious everybody else what that means, is if you're putting in inclusionary housing, you don't have to put it in the building you're building. You can pay a fee into a fund where it sits for some period of time. And yet, you're talking about clustering housing around transportation centers, but the people who need it the most aren't going to be able to participate in that. How can this one?
Sure, no, thank you for that. And I, I, over my time as a board supervisor, the onsite versus being out, some inclusionary was always the eternal debate. And there, and no one's right or wrong, I think we all prefer to have developments that are mixed income, that is uncomfortable. On the other hand, those fees going to be Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which then builds things like senior housing, a hundred percent senior housing, or supportive housing for homeless people, that's how we kind of fund it. So there is a benefit to both, but ideally, you want it to be mixed income. When the board of supervisors reformed the inclusionary ordinance last year, changing some of the percentages, my understanding is that they significantly, they made the feeing out significantly less attractive financially, they increased what the fee would be. And so, and I think the goal of that was to have less, that's my understanding of what they did, so that more people would do, would do onsite.
But state law doesn't permit feeing under sixty-five, nine fifteen, god be honest with you, why shouldn't it? For something that is intended to cluster housing, lower-income people are going to need that, that transportation more than.
Although I would also hope that we would be building, would also want to be building a hundred percent affordable buildings in there. And we built, you know, the fifty-five balloon, you know, buildings where, you know, say, senior housing, or emancipation foster youth housing, or whatever case may be, that those fees help pay for that. And again, my preference is to have the mixed income housing. However, there are, reasonable minds can differ on that, because the fees do pay for things that I think we all support. But regardless, my understanding is the board supervisors last year are making out much less financially attractive.
But the state policy manifests building onsite.
Yeah.
And they're talking about state law.
And the city has made a policy, since we're not changing local inclusionary, San Francisco has made a policy decision that there are two options, they just made one option much less attractive, so I think we're going to see a lot less of it. But that's, that's what San Francisco decided.
Scott, my daughter lives with us and her two children in the basement, in the one-room bedroom. And she's a vice principal at a middle school here in the Sunset. Her job cannot be moved to Mississippi. So I support SB eight twenty-seven. My question, I'm with Scott Prime, SF, and we're involved in the ILLA, great initiative, and we applaud you for your, your work on this specific legislation. We would also like you to consider some of the bills, the assemblyman from, of Grove, I think.
Cooper.
Cooper, yes. Some legislation that would make repeat offenders of any kind of burglary receive. And, you know, so this wouldn't be a wobbler offense, it would have to be a felony.
So.
I, I realize forty-seven might have to be amended.
So, Jim Cooper, who's an assemblyman from the Oak Grove area, does have a bill to make some adjustments there. My understanding is that there is discussion going on, I think that the governor will probably propose an alternative to that. And my suspicion is that we will see a negotiation to make some changes, you know, to address the issue that you're talking about. So I, I am cautiously optimistic we will see a reform, but there will be a lot of dialogue before that happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jim?
Scott, you deserve enormous credit for taking this on. It's a ray of hope that the state will finally start to address the challenges that are so squarely in front of us. I'm happy to support it in any way I can. Would it be possible for you to give us a quick update on high-speed rail and the water tunnels?
So, speaking of our nineteenth-century water system, and I, and the reason why I'm so passionate about water, water recycling, if we have all of these huge, like, Bay Area and LA, agriculture in the cities, we're fighting over this finite, you know, effective diminishing resource, if we just really got serious about water recycling, like Australia did when they had, like, what a teenager drought, that you start wondering, are we going to continue to exist? Or Israel, they recycle in an enormous amount of water. We shouldn't be having this. The water recycling technology is to the point where you can recycle pretty much any water for anything. And people will, it'll be a big factor, people will adjust over time. But we don't do enough, and, and water recycling costs, or I should say, desalination costs five times as much as water. It is much more expensive, has more environmental impact, and so for me, desalination is the last resort, but we need to do a lot more water recycling. The governor proposed his twin-tunnel project that he's been pursuing for, since Jerry Brown on part one. By the way, I just want to say for the record, he is probably the most talented politician I've ever experienced in my life. He, and I don't agree with him on, on everything, but he, I just don't, he's, he's like this force of nature. But this one, he was hitting a wall. So he's now proposed, I think, a single tunnel.
Yes.
And I think part of the, and I didn't support the twin, I was opposed to the twin tunnels. And I think part of the concern was the governor said, you know, "We're going to take a limited amount of water out of the delta to go south." And the question is, why are you building two mammoth tunnels that can take a lot more? So I think by making it smaller and only one, he's trying to send a message that, no, we're serious when we. So I'm hopeful that there can be some sort of solution to this. High-speed rail, and I am a strong supporter of high-speed rail, I think it is embarrassing for California that it takes twice as, taking, getting from San Francisco to LA takes twice as long on a train as it does to drive. It's like eleven or twelve hours. And we can't keep expanding our railways, it's not sustainable, it's unbelie, widening, like, freeways from state, end to end of the state, shocking, like, unbelievably expensive, we're not going to keep doing that. And our airports are running out of capacity. The running, we just can't, we have to have real train service, and we're, you know, we're, a lot of us are very committed to making it a reality. You know, I, I don't know, for those of you who follow me on social media, once a year, I do it every year, it's my annual ritual, there is a, in terms of the cost increases in high-speed rail. Once he, there is a nineteen, January nineteen sixty-six, amazing front page of the Chronicle, talking about the Bart boondoggle, and have we been tricked, and, because Bart's expenses had gone up, and they were just trashing Bart, and this is just fantasy, and they were going to happen. And imagine the Bay Area without Bart. Golden Gate Bridge, cost increases, opposition, imagine not having a Golden Gate Bridge. So every major transformational, transportation infrastructure project ever, pretty much, has had, it's more expensive than anything it's going to be, it's taken longer. And high-speed rail has been different, I think we are going to get it done. And I think we're then going to wonder what the hell we ever lived without. So, I pointed somebody else's.
Thank you for being here. My name's Winston Parsons. My sister and I are lucky to be fourth-generation San Franciscans, and many of my friends and work and neighbors are starting to raise families, and I don't know if they're going to have second-generation San Franciscans, in case they might have to move. So I'm not opposed to welcoming new people here, I'm not opposed to raising heights in certain areas. You know, I live near Gary, and I see, like, one-story buildings, and I see five-story buildings, and I wouldn't be visually opposed to a larger building. That being said, I think there are some things that are missing from your bill. First, you mentioned you want to keep funding services, and there's no, I don't see any additional funding for essential services, schools, fire, police, attached to this bill, and extra people who will come in. My other concern is that a lot of this development will require people moving, if there is a development. Would you consider putting legislation or amending the legislation, so there was something about right of return for people who were displaced from their homes so they can come back? Would you, would you include something for subsidizing interim housing for people who have to move or construct?
Yes.
Would you consider supporting funding for nonprofit housing developers and giving them first opportunity to build more affordable housing?
Yes.
Because I, I honestly, I come from a family that developed property, and I do not trust for-profit developers to look out for individuals best of interest.
Right.
So, a few things. In terms of impact fees, as I'm sure you know, impact fees, local community, San Francisco is not shy about impact fees. In fact, when I was on the board supervisors, I authored legislation, which was really hard for years and years, to increase the transportation impact fees on commercial property, and for the first time ever, put them on residential development. They never, they've been exempt since nineteen. So we did that, and I took, it was a big fight, it took like years, and we got it done. And of course, we have inclusion errors, and then there are the other, the fire department, sewer hookup and all that. And when you are building, say, a ten or twelve-unit apartment building instead of a single-pounding home or two units, you're going to, more inclusionary, you're going to pay more transit impact fees, you're going to pay a much higher sewer and water hookup fee, you're going to pay more to the fire department, you're going to, when you develop bigger, you pay more impact. So that happens naturally, it's just going to be, it's a bigger impact on the system. So we will see an increase in fees with an increase in development. In terms of the right of return, a few people have mentioned that to us, and we're looking at that, to see what, you know, if there is something that could feasibly fit in, so we are taking a hard look at that. In terms of nonprofit developers, you know, I'm someone who, I have, and nonprofit, when you say nonprofit developers, these are people who build a hundred percent affordable housing. And so what we were talking about before, with the fees, the feeing out instead of building onsite, that might need most nonprofit developers to build a hundred percent affordable housing. For my entire time in public life, I have been fighter for more public investment, campaigning for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, supporting two bills that I co-authored last year, SB two and SB three, which increase the state's investment in global housing dramatically. One of them is a bond that's going to be available this year, so billions and billions more for affordable housing. So we want to make sure these nonprofit developers have the resources they need, particularly with the tax bill, another little, the bill that, that tax bill, was that by cutting the corporate tax rate, you undermine the federal local tax credit, it becomes less valuable for taxation, quote unquote. And so we're going to have to step up even more in San Francisco and California to fund affordable housing. In terms of right of refusal, I mean, this is generally private property, someone owns the property, whether it's your family or whether it's whoever else. And, you know, we, it's not, you know, the city buys private property, we just did it from McDonald's, Main Street, and, and we have bought, you know, and when I was on the board, we bought a number of pieces of private property to develop as a hundred percent affordable housing, and I support that kind of acquisition program, I think it's a great program. So, so that we should continue to do. But if someone owns private property, I mean, you can't force them to give it to someone else, like, you can't do even buy it.
I'd like to change, I just don't think what we're doing for investing in affordable housing for low and spectrum of incomes is enough.
Well, let me, let me just comment on that. When I talk about subsidized affordable housing that we're paying for with public money, my focus is low-income housing. Because the market in San Francisco Bay area is, will never produce housing affordable for low-income people. We need to be building up subsidized housing or buying and rehabbing. So that's really important. For the middle class, we will never, ever subsidize our way out of the middle-class housing home. It is too big. If we start devoting significant resources in the middle-class housing, all we're going to do is, we're not going to even, we're still behind on local housing, we'll be even further. The only way to middle-class housing housing will be solved is more housing. And so I would like to focus the resources on low-income people. Low-income isn't just destitute, yes, it includes destitute, it also includes someone who's a Starbucks manager who qualifies as low-income in San Francisco, and that's what I would like to see, with my personal. So, yes.
Thank you, Scott. Couple of comments to follow up on, this gentleman on the inclusionary, I also agree that that should be a great thing to include in the bill, but a couple of thoughts along that way. One, why couldn't, if a state is going to get involved in zoning, why can't you have a statewide inclusionary percentage then? So if you're going to say we have to have inclusionary housing, why can't LA have the same requirement? Because, you know, being in Noe Valley, we've seen a lot of houses built, they've gone from unaffordable housing to super-unaffordable housing. So there's, unfortunately, just growth doesn't solve our problem. We're going to, if we're going to really do it, we're going to have to force it. So I would support including the inclusionary in there, maybe come up with a statewide standard, and perhaps study, could we even increase that percentage? It still makes it economically viable, because a developer has to be worth it while, but is there, are we at that sweet spot? I'd also like to say that maybe we could carve out a sum for this gentleman's daughter who's a principal or our first responders to be able to afford the D in San Francisco. So those are a couple of thoughts. And as to his issue of first-party refusal, I agree with you, you can't force yourself there, property to, but you could say you don't get the bonus density if you don't comply with it for a certain period of time, if you're not going to agree to either have a certain amount of affordable or have first right to a nonprofit. So there are ways that's known within that. My only other, just comment, I'm sorry, just, the thing that gives me pause about this bill, and I know it's for good purposes, and I support that we need more housing, but I, I am concerned about the state telling us how to zone our cities. And what might be good for San Francisco may not be good for Los Angeles, or Napa, or whatever. So I just think, and I know this is for a good reason, I think we really have to give pause to, is that's, why isn't the board of supervisors doing this? And I, you know, you were on the board, so I'm sure you probably did try to do this, like, isn't this something the board should be doing?
So, first of all, thank you for mentioning what you call a sweet spot on the inclusionary percentage, I totally agree with. Sometimes when we have debates about inclusionary, people say, "Let's go with twenty-five percent." And, and say, "Well, why, why is it about twenty-five percent?" "Well, it's a nice round, a good-looking number." "Well, then, let's go with fifty percent, that's an even better number." And we, we know that our goal, people don't live in percentages, people live in, you know, the goal is to produce the largest number of affordable units. So you could set the inclusionary, like, you set it fifty percent, and for the projects that won't get built, doesn't pencil, and then you get zero. And so you're looking for that number where it's, you're going to hit that sweet spot and have the largest number of units built, which might not be the highest percentage. And San Francisco just went through that when it set to eighteen percent, and it gone to twenty-five, and then the feasibility study showed eighteen was the, was the piece one. So in terms of local control, you know, as a former local electorate, there are, I know there are many situations where local control, even complete local control, makes all the sense of it. There are other areas that are issues of statewide concern, and where there has to be a balance between the state role and the local role. So you look at something like public education, right? We have a local school district, a lot of local schoolwork. Our local school districts in California have a lot of latitude in terms of what they decide locally for their community. But it's not, it's not complete local control. The state sets a lot of standards for school districts, and within those parameters, they get their local control. For housing, we have had the approach, which I think is the anomaly, for many years, that housing is a purely local issue, the state has no role, the state passes laws sometimes, but they have no teeth, but they don't get enforced, they've been in the books since the eighties, involving units, for example, where they get ignored. And I believe that if, maybe that made sense at one point, given the situation we're in now, having complete local control over housing with no state baseline, the parameters, it's not working anymore. And so we have community, some communities, like frankly, San Francisco, San Francisco makes a good paid effort to build housing, Redwood City, there are cities that, that really make a good paid effort to build housing. There are other cities that just say, "We don't want to build any housing," or "We're going to build one little four-unit building, and that's going to be, look at, we're going to pat ourselves on the back and move on." And it becomes a little bit, sometimes, a little bit of a race to the bottom, where people, or communities decide, no housing, yes, housing, and what we're saying... And what we're saying is that the state, given this is a statewide crisis affecting our state climate goals, our state economy, our state diversity, we, the state needs to set parameters and then within those parameters is the local role. And it's a shift, it's a change, it is always clunky and painful and leads to a lot of debate, where, you know, reasonable minds can differ on where you draw that line. But I think that the line needs to be changed and that's sort of where we're coming from, not having a state take over everything, but having a different state versus local. That's sort of my perspective on it.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kathy Lipskin and I live in Noe Valley as a tenant, I've been there for 25 years. I live in an old kind of ramshackle building with 36 units. And one of the problems that I see in the city, oh, it was built in '62, it's a frame building. One of the problems that I see that affects my building and 179,000 rent-controlled buildings in the city, is that when a tenant moves, the landlords can raise the rent to market rate. And so this is devastating, it's for a lot of people. Because the market rate in this old building, you know, it's kind of a mess, it's, no, it's okay, is like $3,000 for one unit apartment. This is not helping. So there is a move by tenants in the city and in the state, you probably know, to reform or to repeal, I should say, the Costa Hawkins. Costa Hawkins prohibits, prohibits, listen to this, prohibits rent control on buildings built, apartment buildings built after 1979. Also, it does not allow landlords, it allows landlords to raise the rent to market rate throughout the state when somebody moves in a rent-controlled apartment. In my hometown of Washington DC, it was at least to a comparable rate, which is much fairer than the present situation. But I think that it's important for everybody in this room to look at that, that element of those buildings that were built after 1979 and which could be put under rent control if we can repeal this, this bill. I know that you're for rent control and I wonder how you feel about repealing Costa Hawkins.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, with Costa Hawkins, the rule is that typically that rent control can apply to buildings that were built up to the time they do adopt your rent control ordinance, no later than, I think it's 1995. So in San Francisco, it's 1979 and Berkeley, Santa Monica, West Hollywood, that or the early eighties. But in places that adopted, say today, it's around 1995 is the cutoff. And I support reforming Costa Hawkins to give cities more flexibility to allow newer buildings to go into rent. And there are two counterbalancing things here. Number one, we want to make sure that people have incentive to actually build rental housing. But the idea that you have this permanent distinction, so 1978 building in rent control, 1980 building not in rent control, permanent forever, doesn't make sense. And so what I would like to see is perhaps a rolling time period where newer buildings after a certain period of time can go into rent control if a community decides to do that. And I think that would have a very significant impact. You would give developers still a financial incentive to build new rental housing, but eventually buildings would transition into rent control if the city had rent control.
What about single-family homes?
What?
What about single-family homes?
Single-family homes, I, you know, I think I would want to distinguish between situations where someone, they own their home versus, say like a REIT or investment company that is buying up hundreds of single-family homes. I think there, to me, I would draw a distinction between the two. So I, you know, and this is all a long way of saying, there's, there are really thoughtful ways to try to talk about Costa Hawkins and reform it that would have very tangible positive benefits. The tragedy is that right now, the discussion about Costa Hawkins in the legislature, that the discussion has, is so deeply polarized that it's all either repeal the whole thing or don't move one comment in it. They're not talking to each other. There was this battle in the legislature that as far as I could tell, there was never even discussion or negotiation or resolution. There's now a statewide ballot measure that's being proposed by a toxic organization called the AIDS Healthcare Foundation in Los Angeles, which is an outcast from the HIV community and which loses almost every single ballot measure that's on the ballot. They don't, they're, it's not, I don't know, they're not enough to win, they're not enough to make a point. At the same time, now someone moving, that's who's not interested in negotiation or finding a resolution, but just in having the fight. And so what I would say is, I would like us to move to that point and maybe it takes going through this ballot measure, and I don't know what's going to happen with the ballot measure, but if that ballot measure, let's say, comes close but doesn't win, if it wins, it wins, it's Costa Hawkins' appeal, period, the debate is over. If it comes close but doesn't win, that could open a door to negotiations because opponents know, well, maybe we have a shot in the future, the future, but it's hard. The opponents know, hey, we beat it back this time, but we might lose next time, let's negotiate. So it's either going to get repealed later this year on the ballot, or maybe we'll have an opportunity to actually negotiate and come up with a resolution that creates incentives to build new rental housing and not protect, that's what I would do. So, yes.
A hundred years ago today...
Not, lots of Noe Valley here today.
A hundred years ago today, the Twin Peaks Tunnel Alton, and I view that as a real estate development project because that then led to St. Francis Wood and this section of the city. The thing that concerns me about housing is the fees that are assigned to it. You've got the transportation sustainability fees that was connected to a matrix of saying that there's a requirement for transportation in the new housing. That was then diluted by 75% into the transportation sustainability fee. So, Muni's only collecting about 15 to 20 million dollars a year on that for growth. And my position is that, and the transportation sustainability fee only kicks in at 21 units and exempts nonprofit organizations from being. So, the real question that I look at is, how are you going to fund the infrastructure with all the growth? Because growth is not funding growth when you start building all of this. So, that's, that's my real issue at the local level because there's no money coming from anywhere else. Last Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, at the Muni off-site meeting, Director Raskin basically said that the development agreements that were already made are inadequate to fund growth of Muni. That, that's a true statement, because I was there. And you just continue going on, thinking that all of this is going to be fine, but I'm saying growth needs to fund growth in the overall picture because right now, we're putting the worst support apart and not funding.
Sure. So in terms of, I think that that number, the 10 to 20 million, is going to go up over time because we phased, we phased it and it didn't take effect all at once, it was a gradual thing. But with that said, you know, as someone, again, I authored the bill to extend the transit impact fees to residential for the first time, increase the personal, obviously I believe in transportation impact fees. With that said, transportation impact fees were never intended to, like, this is the funding for the system and that would be really unsustainable because development goes up and down and then it's not a reliable source, it's like one-time payments. And we have to, you know, ultimately, our infrastructure needs, our transportation needs have to be paid for by the taxpayer, because that's why, that's what we do. And so I'm all for those fees, but I would never want to just rely on those as that's how we fund transportation, it's not, never going to be adopted, it's not sustainable.
No, for the expansion.
But, and then when we do do new development, you know, that is increasing our tax burden, we're getting more property taxes, if there are visit retail going in or office, we're getting more sales taxes, maybe gross receipts taxes. So when we do do development, you get the immediate payment of the, you know, sort of property transfer tax fee, and then over time, you're permanently getting property tax or whatever other tax. So I don't, I, it's not just about the impact because it's one time at the beginning, over time, you're getting ongoing revenue from that new, from that department. So Dennis.
Commissioner. Thank you, Senator. I just want to say, everybody in this room, I welcome you to San Francisco, my fantasy is that at some point we're going to have more electable votes, be able to never have another Trump elect, Trump victory in the future. And I feel your pain. Honestly, when I read a report about millennials not being able to have a higher standard of living than their parents, it really hit home. I have a niece who lives in the city and she's always constantly, she pays half of her income in rent and she wants to move out because she's not saving any money or building wealth. And that's a big issue as you age, if you don't build wealth, you don't have any security. So, the goals of the SBA 27, I completely understand the public policy rationale behind it, just some context for the city. Since 1990, we upzoned the city to accommodate 100,000 additional units out through the area plans. 100,000 units, that kind of, you know, whatever we did in the sixties and seventies.
Could you repeat that again, please?
We upzoned 100,000 units in the city since 1990 through the area plans. And that should erase a lot of the damage we did maybe in the sixties and seventies and the eighties. We also allow another 30,000 ADUs to be built and they're actually, thank you Senator Weiner, you did it in the Castro first and we thought the triple is actually now becoming a river and we're on, on to the upper hundreds there. So I want to make sure that everybody understands, and again, not to discount the need for transit-oriented development, with the existing zoning capacity we have in the city, and I'll get to my punchline, we could build an additional 143,000 units. That's not chump change. So our pipeline alone has 60,000 units, and what does that mean? We have 5,875 currently under construction, we have 17,000 units that are approved, entitled, but not yet built, we have 30,000 that are approved in master plans like Treasure Island, Park Merced and the Hunter's Point Shipyard, which I think we need to work on getting infrastructure money to allow those to get built, that's a real issue here. And then we have the additional capacity for the city that's still out there that can be built is 16,580 U's, 51,000 soft sites where the height is currently higher than what's the building is, and that's actually significantly lower, the building's lower than the actual height. We have 7,200 applications currently pending that are awaiting to get entitled. And then we have 15,575 units out there waiting rezoning. So that all adds up to 143,000 units. Now, with the infrastructure idea to get those units actually built, we've got a, the reason why we're getting a lot of these units built, the number one reason is construction costs. So I'm hearing construction cost, construction cost, construction cost, and then financing because of construction costs, because they're too high. Projects aren't penciling out. So, one of the issues that I'm worried about is what I call unaffordable by cost. So even at, even if you sold a unit, it cost half a million, whatever, that it cost to actually make, build, how are you going to get people that can't even afford that to live in there? So there's kind of missing middle, there's a gap there that's unaffordable by cost to me. I think that from a make your bill better point of view, from a displacement point of view, this bill alone may have eviction and displacement protections in it, but the Housing Accountability Act doesn't. So it's kind of, bills being kind of all coupled together to actually, that could incite displacement or demolition. And I know we here in the city need to work on that and make sure that we have objective standards rather than subjective standards as we currently have. The other thing is historic preservation. If we wanted to preserve everything that's sold, we'd still be a city of, you know, one-story shacks, right? We actually demolished one on Portillo Hill last Thursday by approval, that was, that's been there for hundreds of years, so it wasn't historic. However, I'm worried that this SBA 27 doesn't go far enough in terms of the CQ ratings of the buildings themselves. So, on the national register, on the state register and a local landmark, is a very, very small percent of the homes, it's probably less than 1%. Expanding it to CQ A structures would probably expand that by maybe at half a percent, but I'm worried about those structures. On the right of first return...
Can you send, can you send?
I'm going to send all these to you.
Send out, since we have to write them.
Yeah, no, okay, so absolutely, and either to make the bill better. The right of return that we're seeing at the planning commission is our rent stabilization law doesn't go far enough. Construction normally takes longer than three months, people get evicted because they're going to add an ADU or they're going to, you know, add a floor or whatever, and they move to Antioch or wherever and they never come back. So that's the real issue. The account, the art, I'm sorry, the Conservatory of Music did it right. So they did a project where they're displacing tenants, they put them in buildings until the, the new building's done and had them come back at the same rent. These are the kind of things that I think would really, a lot, a lot of the concerns people have around displacement and impact.
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, we are, some people in LA actually feel this too with, you know, talking about the right of return, and so we're actively looking at that to see what it might look like. You know, you, I'm glad, thank you for mentioning the missing middle because you're right, construction costs for many different reasons, and the North Bay fires have exacerbated that, I mean, the shorter construction labor, everyone being instructed with that. But the, you know, this missing middle was just what this bill is, right? Largely four- and five-story buildings that are going to be lower construction costs because it's not steel. And so that, that is a, so, we have five minutes left, so we'll take a few more, yes?
I have a question that's probably not very, a subject that's not very controversial probably, unless you have bankers in this room. It addresses the affordability and the financing issues and that is, are you, I assume you're familiar with the effort to put together a state bank charter, and we don't have to discuss that here, it's more complicated than we need to go into. I'm just curious as to where you stand on that and also how you think, are you, are you like at all involved in sort of that difficult effort of making it work with regard to our relationship with the Federal Reserve?
Yeah, so I, the good thing is there's some really smart people in the legislature working on that and so, you know, I support their efforts, I don't want to replicate this, we sort of divide different subject areas. So my colleague, Senator Bob Kretzberg from LA is working on that. And one of the, there are various benefits of doing that, one of them, of course, is the fact that the federal government, you know, if you're a cannabis business, it's find it harder or possible to bank. And so it becomes an all-out cash business and, and we want to, with a state bank, it's going to be easier for us to allow cannabis businesses to bank, but there are other benefits as well, so yes, I do support.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago, the state changed its metric for measuring the impact of automobiles on new development from local traffic congestion to a metric called vehicle miles traveled. And the idea was to reduce sprawl, so bring, bring density in. But by doing so, we're no longer considering the impact or the possible impairment of emergency vehicle access in the areas in gridlock. So I think it would be helpful to have some sort of balance between these two measures, not just throw one away and go completely to the other. Ask for your comment on that.
Yeah, so I think that the, the goal of that change was, because right now, for a long time, a bus with 50 people on it was treated as identical to one vehicle with a single occupant. And the idea that it's really about your level of service, it's about how many, or not level of service, it's about how many people you're moving through, not how many vehicles. And, you know, that in terms of attack on emergency service, I mean, the reality is that the gridlock is already here. And the gridlock gets worse, frankly, when you don't build housing, airport transportation, which will ask me 2027 and stuff, when you, when you have superload density around transit, that means housing gets built further out and you have more congestion in gridlock. When you concentrate more housing around public transportation, people drive less, some people might give up their car power, other people will have a car, but they're not driving everywhere and so you reduce gridlock. And that, to me, is the most effective way to reduce traffic. Yes, we'll do a couple more, yes?
Earlier, when you were asked a question about the goal of the city versus the state in demolition controls, you seem to assign responsibility to the city. For demolition controls, this might be a more simple thing for city owner to decide, but there have been a lot of, I spoke of that concern, but SBA 27 saying they would support it if amendments were introduced, which it sounds like you're working on, for making sure that people have some kind of right of return and also that, like in the case, like the, I said, the Commissioner Dennis's, sorry, Commissioner Richard's comment regarding the music conservatory, which not only allowed people the right of return at some, or, sorry, put them in a nearby building where they were able to rent at the same rate that they had been and rent control continued, but they also made sure that all the new accommodations were within a certain radius so that community cohesion could continue. There's a lot of grassroots antagonists towards SBA 27 from the Mission and other core communities in San Francisco that I think... that I think might be alleviated if you were to address some of those concerns at the state level. Can you tell us any more about these amendments that you're currently working on?
The right of return was, it was, you know, the bill is a few weeks old, and so it's been a recent discussion, so I, you know, we're taking a look at that and exploring it. I don't want to say what it's going to be because I don't know yet. We're evaluating and seeing what we can do. I will say, and this ties into what Commissioner Richards was saying before, the upzoning of the city, it was concentrated in certain areas. Other than Park Merced, it was mostly like eastern, southeastern parts of the city. And the rest of the city was really not upzoned, other than through in-law unit, which we have been required to do for thirty-five years anyway. And so the Mission, right now, SBA twenty-seven, the impact in the Mission is going to be dramatically lower than many other neighborhoods. The Mission already has most of it, the bulk of it, has no density controls. Eastern neighborhoods got rid of density restrictions. The Mission already has an awful lot of fifty-foot to eighty-five-foot zoning. So the Mission is already fairly tall and dense in terms of the zoning. And so the impact of SBA twenty-seven, I'm not saying it's zero impact, but it's dramatically lower than other neighborhoods.
What about making sure that people are moved, have some kind of compensation or accommodation to move to somewhere nearby?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, we're looking at all of that. The nearby part, it gets more challenging when you're in an expensive market and questions, it's, it's where physically where they can go. And I, you know, dealt with this tragically, you know, before I was on the board supervisors. Until you are in a position where you're getting reports about every fire that happens, I think you don't realize how many fires there are. And on the board supervisors, you get a text message every time there's a fire in your district, and it is, I don't think, if you hadn't been following that before. And every time there was a fire in a part building, my first thought was, I hope everyone's okay. And then my second, my second thought was, I feel horrible for the tenants. Because in San Francisco, we do have a right of return. If you are burned out of your apartment, and they have to fix it so you get a temporary thing, you have a right to come back at the same rent that you were paying. And there are some building owners, and there was one like at Fourteenth and Church in this, where they had a fire, and I think within eighty-six months, the most of the tenants were back. They really diligently fixed the building, and that's in fact. There was another one at Fourteenth and Dolores, eighty-seven Dolores, where they're still not back, it happened, you know, four years ago, maybe. And I actually was out in the sunset, and I met a young family, a young couple with a kid. It was like, we're out here now, you know, we actually, we like the sunset, we're not going to go back, and it's taking too long. So it's, it's so variable in terms of how it happened, but we are looking at what we can do in the bill, possession standards for that. If you have specific feedback, you know, if you put a rating in somewhere, that would be great. Yes?
Hello, my name is Eric Mills, a Polish culture, not a constituent, a fan. I'm a coordinator back to the ground, who's been helping many members here in San Francisco.
Action what?
Action for animals. I'm also on the board and fallback, help on the political legislative voting chart for animals. Senator Reeder, under A Green last year, who seems highly promoted in the city, I think was saying at the same time, St. Francis, picking some animals. Look, I have a request. I have two bills, I'm back, coming back to wedge council this week. Two bills up in New York, all of them are going to be twenty years. One to require all-site veterinary care and all road units in California.
On what?
All-site veterinary care and all road units in California.
Oh, road units, right, yeah.
And then mandate steer technical debt. Caesar Childs will be running support in that area. So hopefully, I consider that a solid support. That's part of the constituency, which I've heard from alcohol and alcoholism. Work you're doing on human issues, like we wait-
Oh, I hear, oh, no, you hear about, oh, no, there.
Yeah, I worry that-
Tech artists are not invited.
Yeah, but if we wait, all the human problems are resolved, all the issues are standardized. They were there, I forgot. We could do, we could ask for that, you could be a fan for, hopefully, if you say.
Thank you. We did, we passed the bill that Governor signed last year to really try to degrade this long-borne puppy mills. I started to help, going through all of California. That was a big step, and I found, I know in San Francisco, you know, I know a lot of animal related work on the board, and I identify through the legislators who are in San Francisco. And we're happy to take a look at that, I haven't heard of that.
Thank you.
All right, so one, I didn't, one more, and then Laura? Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry.
Senator Reeder, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
As members of the Senate, I'm really concerned about clean water issues. And I know that you attempted to bring water recycling into the neighborhood. Couple of things in this neighborhood specifically. We have an issue with firefighting. There's not enough water in the neighborhood if there were-
Auxiliary systems?
Yeah, not enough in system. And you're proposing density, of course, I'm going to be straight up, I oppose this bill. I stand with, with people who live in primarily black neighborhoods, Crenshaw in LA, who call this a gentrification bottle. Straight, they call it twentieth-century style redlining for, apparently, supported by first century, or other generals. I'm going to stand with that, but I'm going to make a suggestion. If you're going to, if you go forward with this bill, why not bring in water recycling? From, you know, as these, as these parties, as we densify the neighborhoods, there's more flow into our sewer systems. Here in the sunset, every time it rains, over one inch, it overflows into the bay, into the ocean. So we get, our sewers are overflowing into the ocean this time. We need more capacity, we need money to do it. Would you explore the potential, from a harm reduction standpoint, if this horrible bill goes through? Would it be, would you be willing to put that clean water, the water recycling with it?
Yeah, well, I don't agree with the premise that you just said there, but I do agree that the auxiliary water system has to be expanded on the west side, and that we have some sewer capacity issues, not just out here, but over a mile supervisor district on Cayuga and other areas where the, you have these huge problems. Part of it is that we have combined, you know, as you know, in a combined sewer system where rainwater and sewage go from the same pipes. Most cities don't have that, we have it in Sacramento. It would be like, the expense of separating it is ninety, it's just off the charts. And so, yeah, I'm very supportive of the structural changes to address that. One thing I will just say, and you mentioned that, you know, the Crenshaw group in LA that talks about how this is gentrification bottle. What causes gentrification is not having enough housing. And we've seen that in neighborhoods in San Francisco that have had very little housing, yet are experiencing significant displacement. And to refer to this bill as redlining is almost, this is not you repeating what they said, I think is almost like, it's like a, it's like a bad joke. Because when you look at the history, and this is, and this is, again, I have a bit of single-family homes, I'm not commenting on who lives in single-family homes. Single-family home zoning was created immediately after the Supreme Court struck down racial zoning. It was created explicitly to keep black people out.
This is a black, this is a black neighborhood.
Yeah, so the idea is one person. So the idea, the idea that saying we want more apartment buildings in a neighborhood, and that is redlining, is, again, for this guy in LA, I think, is absurd. That's my example of being very pragmatic.
I'll tell him that you said that his idea is absurd. Now, about the clean water. I mean, simply to take rainwater, that we redensify, we densify a property, you fill up a block instead of a quarter of a block. Why not put that water down that falls on the roof into the ocean by letting it hurt? Why not require that? That's a straightforward, simple solution.
And I've been very aggressive in my water reuse work.
I would suggest-
Including mandating and removing structure. Okay, we're at two of seven, I think I had told you before, and why don't we just wrap it up?
Yeah, so I know at some point, Governor Brown, just a little while ago, was working on by-rate zoning for certain types of areas. And I know that, you know, one of the big contributors to inflating the cost of construction and providing more housing in any given area is uncertainty, and not knowing how long it's going to take to get your project totally entitled. So I was wondering if there's been, if that's just dead right now, or are you working on something down the pipeline to get by-rate zoning for, in some form?
Well, that's what we did, SP thirty-five is by-rate zoning. So SP thirty-five, we, it's, it's not, the government proposal was much broader, and it had some strength, and it had some weakness to it. So SP thirty-five, we basically started where the governor left off, and we, SP thirty-five is by-rate. Okay, everyone, thank you so much, Ken.